I'd like to call the order, the August 25th, 2022, meeting of the Clive City Council. Would the clerk please call roll?
Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Council members Klein.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins. Weaver.
Here.
Michelannani.
Here.
Very good. If you would all rise and join us in pledgely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know of no changes to the agenda.
With approval.
Second.
The motion is second to approve the agenda. Further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Our agenda is approved. Next is our citizen presentation. This provides citizens with the opportunity to approach the council on an item that is not on the agenda. And while Pete checks to see if there's anyone online, I'll just remind you of the tenants we follow. We support the pillars of character counts, endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting our work, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner, consistent with these principles. Pete, do we have anyone online?
Not at this time, Your Honor.
Do we have anyone in the chamber? If you would come forward, please.
It's awful to get old and you have to use these. Good evening. Can you hear me okay? My name's Jackie Seymour and I've lived at 9264 Lincoln Avenue for the past 18 years. I'd like to discuss the current language and some issues that have arisen with Chapter Seven, Section One of the Animal and Protection Code of Ordinance for the City of Clive, specifically subsections A and D listed under definitions. Currently, the city code reads as follows for animals at large. At-large, found within the city upon any street, alley, sidewalk, public or private grounds. A dog properly licensed as required by law is not deemed to be at-large if, and these are the two sections I have an issue with. A, it is on the premises of the owner, or D, it is accompanied by or at heel beside and obedient to the commands of the owner or competent responsible person. I love the Indian Hills neighborhood. I particularly love it because it's a dog-walking neighborhood, and that's the way I've met many of my neighbors over the years, in particular Brian, my next-door neighbor sitting over there, and he's going to speak to this in a moment. However, during the past two years, the number of people walking and exercising their dogs off-leash in public spaces or allowing their dogs to roam off their property has increased to the point where I can no longer safely walk my dog in my own neighborhood. I have had to resort to walking along the busy Clive and West Des Moines city streets such as University, 86th, West Elm Parkway, we go quite a ways, 50th Street, Valley West Drive. You get the idea. Just to avoid encounters with loose dogs in my own neighborhood. While this may seem extreme, I would rather face rush hour traffic in these areas than unprovoked attacks by unleashed and uncontrolled dogs in my own neighborhood. I might add, we can no longer walk on the Green Belt Trail, and that's issue for another time, but it's because of the high-speed rude and unsafe behavior and lack of general trail etiquette, to be quite frank, of the bikers. It's just become unsafe for us to do that. So, the city streets are our only options to do it safely at this time. Within the past year, my pets and I have been aggressively approached or attacked on numerous occasions. Particularly, bad spot is the soccer football field behind Indian Hills Junior High School. Many people tend to use this area as their own personal dog park. There's one in Windsor Heights, less than three miles away, if they want to do that, but a lot of people take their large breed dogs there to exercise them off-leash. There are also portions of the neighborhood that we avoid, especially dead-end streets, such as Northwest 90th Street and Carpenter Circle Drive, where homeowners simply let their dogs roam free because they're dead-end streets and they figure it's safer, I guess. I don't know why, to be quite frank. It's quite dangerous to do that, but their dogs run loose, and we now have to completely avoid those areas. On at least four to five occasions, we've had dogs chase and or pin us when we were walking on a sidewalk. And again, my dogs are always leashed. I always have them on leash. When I ask the offending party to put their dog on a leash, I'm often told, but my dog is friendly. Well, this just argument just doesn't hold any water. We teach our children to always ask before approaching or petting a strange dog, right? Why do we do that? Well, because we don't want any surprises or unprovoked attacks. Same thing is true with animals. Leash dogs do not always like to be approached by a dog off-leash, and they may often react aggressively. And if that happens, I have no control over the situation then. Another comment I often hear is, my dog always obeys my commands. So if they're at heel, they're always going to obey me, right? Well, if that were the case, I wouldn't be standing here discussing this issue with you. No regular family dog, unless they're used for military, police, or search and rescue work, is highly trained to the point where they will be under complete obedience in all situations. Finally, dog owners who allow their pets to roam unsupervised and unconstrained on their property are also a bit of a danger. Dogs who are unchained and unconstrained tend to be quite territorial and protective of their home, and they don't understand where the sidewalk is a public space where strange people and dogs have the right to pass in front of them. By allowing the definition section of this code to include the loophole of permitting dogs to be off-leash as long as they obey a heel command of their owner or as long as they are on the premises of the owner without being constrained, literally makes the at-large portion of the code a moot point and places numerous innocent people, especially small children and family pets, at risk of being attacked or harmed. I respectfully ask that the council seriously consider rewriting this section of the code to require all dogs be on leash at all times when in the public space and to require dogs on private property to be properly restrained or contained at all times. I know Brian would also like to speak to this issue, but I want to thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Before you step down, does anyone in the council have any questions for Jackie? Go ahead.
Jackie, at any of those times, did you call the police?
No, I didn't, because usually the dog had run off or the person with the dog had left the premise so fast, there was no point in calling them because I don't know where they came from. I don't know where they live. I did not recognize them.
I'll speak for the chief a bit, but because I've heard him say it a hundred times. It does help if you do call, because then there's a record and they can track how many times that's happening in those neighborhoods.
Particularly if there's a homeowner, right, where the dogs are not at a home.
I have called about homeowners and nothing happens.
Okay.
Get it on the record.
Yeah, I would call the 911 chief and put, get it on the record so that, I mean, after a night like this, the mayor could ask, or we could ask for a record of that area and see, or in any of these type of cases, ask for how many are happening around the whole community, and that helps.
I'd be happy to do that in the future. I have spoken to the police department on several occasions about this ordinance, just to get clarity.
Sure.
And I know they have frustration with it as well.
Sure.
Jackie, have your dogs been attacked while you've been walking them?
They have not here. Well, they were bitten in Sioux City where my parents live, but in Clive, they have been attacked and actually pinned to the ground with the dog over them, bearing its teeth, not bitten to this point, thank God. But we have, and I had witnesses to it on numerous occasions.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jackie. Matt, do you want to respond at this point?
Or my question would have been similar to council member McCoy's in terms of us putting some information together of what records we do have, but at this point, I don't have any further comments, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you, Jackie.
Hello. As Jackie said, my name is Brian Butsky. I do live next door to her at 1700 Northwest 92nd Street in Clive. I have two larger breed dogs that we go on a walk every single night. And multiple times, even just here in the last month, dogs come charging out of houses at us, and my dogs are super friendly, but someone will let their dog out, you know, they think it's late at night, you know, eight o'clock. They think maybe there's not going to be as many people around. They just let them out the front door to go use the restroom, and they just come charging out at us multiple times. And it's not, they, you know, my dogs have not been injured at all, but several times I've had to pull other dogs away from them. And it's, it just doesn't make sense to, to just let your dog out unleashed when it's aggressive like that. Halloween of last year, a German Shepherd mix did attack one of my dogs. My dog was on the leash. That dog was just walking with its owner and then just got aggressive and charged across a yard at us. But I was able to pull the other dog off. It was like an elderly gentleman. He was not able to pull his dog away. He was not able to control it. But I was, and I had to pin his dog to the ground to be able to get a leash on it that the owner had, but just wasn't using. So it's just, it's scary. Not necessarily, you know, maybe for my dogs. Jackie has two very small dogs. So, you know, like for her, it's definitely a lot more stressful to have to worry about that. But in general, it just doesn't seem safe to have unleashed dogs going throughout the neighborhood. There is one, one dog in our neighborhood that is a hunting dog and is extremely nice and well-trained that will, you know, come and go, you know, with his owner's commands. But there are plenty others that you just see out roaming around by themselves sometimes. So, just in consideration to maybe taking a look at the way that it's written, would appreciate it.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, do you have anything to add?
First up, I'd be glad to, to collect information regarding any calls for service. We can search that by, by call type, and I'll, I'll get with you next week sometime on, on the information so you get some idea of how prevalent the issue might be.
And I will mention too, Your Honor, that we are, we were planning to do a newsletter article, I think in the next newsletter. As a matter of fact, on, because I know you received a note on this, and I'm not sure if it was from Jackie or Brian, but regarding off-leash concerns and that we were going to do some education in the newsletter, just in terms of what owners need to be thinking about in terms of that, but again, we'll follow up with information and then seek the council's guidance on whether you desire to see any changes in ordinances.
Chief, it seems like though that the examples that were used tonight fall under something we could have a discussion with these folks or cite them eventually, right, on this.
Yeah, I would say that each, each situation is different. Our ordinance does say if a dog is at heel and under control, it's not in violation of the ordinance. But if, you know, every, every case is, is different, and if we get called out and, and a dog is obviously away from its, its owner or repeating problem or something like that, it is available under our current ordinances for enforcement action to be taken.
And that's where I'm a little nervous of continuing to make more and more and more policy or, you know, laws over things if we can already
do something.
Do something with the laws we have today. Enforce them. That's where I encourage you, Jackie, to make those phone calls, because we can. If your dog gets attacked, we can enforce that, right? I mean, that's against our current law.
I was told on there that, will they make a report?
Jackie, would you mind coming to the mic so the audience can have the
Well, we'll talk to, another time, but we'll talk to the chief about this and review it.
Matt, do you think it'd be helpful? I mean, I'm not sure how our ordinance maybe differs from those of other metro cities. Would it be worthwhile to have someone?
We could do some comparison analysis for you as well to, to our neighbors, and we can do that and kind of report back to you. Yep.
That'd be helpful.
Definitely do that, Your Honor.
Is there anyone else here to present on an item that is not on the agenda? Thank you all for coming in. We appreciate your feedback. Very well, the next item we have are the consent items.
Move a resolution.
Second. We have a motion, a second, on our consent items. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And then would the clerk please post that vote? And the consent items passed by a vote of four to zero. We have presentations, and Jeff, it looks like you're up.
Good morning. Come on up. Mayor, council. Good evening. It's a great pleasure that I get a chance and opportunity tonight to introduce to you our two newest employees. We're very fortunate to have found a couple employees to join us here. They'll be joining us next week. The first one is Landon Berry here. Landon comes to us with four years of experience with other public works agencies in Missouri and North Dakota. Has a CDL B, so we got him ready to go for snow plowing season this upcoming year and looking forward to getting him started. We also have a plan, and I'll let you introduce first.
Like you said, my name is Landon Berry. It's very good to meet everybody, and I'm really excited to get started on the team here whenever, next week, so.
Welcome. Where in Missouri are you from?
So I'm from a small town called Perry, Missouri, and I worked for the city of Hannibal, Missouri, which is the birthplace of Mark Twain, real easy kind of.
Got lots of speed cameras there.
Yeah. Yes, they do. Yes, they do.
You know, like you know.
Welcome. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Our other new employee is Luke Lewis. Luke, while young, does come to us with some truck driving experience and has a CDL Class A. Excited to get him started, and he's looking forward to joining us, I believe. So I'll let Luke introduce him.
Yeah, my name's Luke, and I'm just really excited for Monday, and thank you for this opportunity.
Where do you hail from?
Urban Dell.
Urban Dell.
Urban Dell. Distance.
Yeah.
Distance, village.
Speed cameras there.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. We're excited to have you both join us.
Thank you.
Looks like we have a process improvement from the police department. Mike?
Get this pulled up for Jeff here a second. I got it. I think I got it.
We gotta share your screen first.
Oh, you better jump in there then. Quickly surpassed my technical capabilities.
It's a low bar there, Chief.
It was the power button.
All right.
You should be able to advance that with a click.
All right.
Oh, thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, every year, one of, each of the city departments comes forward with a, a process improvement. Tonight, Mr. Jeff Miller is going to talk to you about a process improvement that he worked on. Arrest warrants are something we commonly do, and sometimes those arrest warrants can slip through the cracks. And Jeff came up and implemented a way for us to be a little bit more efficient and get those served in more timely manners. So, Jeff Miller.
Thanks, Chief. Your Honor, Council, thank you for having me. Up until a couple of years ago, our warrants came in and they were put in a binder, and that was it. That's all we did. So what we did a couple of years ago, we went ahead and I created a spreadsheet with all the warrants and all the current information. Okay, so they are on the spreadsheet, which all the officers had access to, but, you know, only if they had time and staffing allowed would they go out and serve the warrant. So, really not a whole lot was being done. So, the, the, the old process, how do I advance this?
Just a close bar work.
The power button.
The old process would be the, the officer or detective would apply for a warrant. The warrant would be authorized by a Dallas or county or Polk County Attorney's Office. It came back to the Clive PD. It was given to me, and then what I would do at that time, this is the old process. I would go in and prepare it for entry into the NCIC. I would send it to Westcom Dispatch. And then the warrant was then given to the, our records people, and it was, they were put in the file, and that was it. So that was a problem. So what we wanted to do, we wanted to initiate a, another process. Now, the old process would only, the warrants would be taken off if someone was arrested by a different department or they turned themselves in. Very rarely did we go out and try to serve the warrants. And a lot of these warrants are low-hanging fruit. I mean, something where maybe a person got, has some drug paraphernalia and wasn't arrested at the time, and it came to warrant, you know, unless he or she knows about it. I mean, it might be years before we, we get the person. So what you see there, that's the, our current arrest warrant. That's a spreadsheet that I created. That's a snip from July 20th. So anyway, warrants are public information, so I'm not violating any, any problems with that. So that's the, our current arrest warrant spreadsheet that we have. We, right now, we have 80 names on it. That's just a snip from it. So the new process, very similar, an officer or detective would apply for a warrant. The warrant is authorized by the county attorney's office. The warrant sent back to PD. I put the warrant in the shared file for everybody to see, and then I sent it to Westcom for entry. And at the same time, then I contacted the detective officer and say, okay, what do you want done? Do you want me to send this person a letter, or do you want me, do you just want to, you know, just let it go? Because, to be quite frank, you know, a lot of people are career criminals, and so why waste the postage sending something to like Omaha? Just this week, we had a warrant come in for sexual abuse in the third degree, and I contacted detectives. So what do you want me to do with this? He said, I've already contacted a lawyer, and they're going to bring him in. So again, you know, the officer detective gives me the authorization to send out the letters. And what I've done, these are the new warrants, but I've gone, has gone back to the old warrants, the old spreadsheet, and picked up the low-hanging fruit and been sending out letters just with, you know, my own decision-making. The letters authorized and sent to the offender by Bob Samsky or I, and then we, we tracked the case on a separate spreadsheet. Now, the one spreadsheet I showed you earlier, everyone has access to it. This is a sample of the letter. Basically, it says you can turn yourself in to the PD, the Dallas or Polk County Jail. You can contact the bondsman, contact your attorney. A lot of times what they'll do when they get these letters, they'll contact their attorney, and the attorney contact us, and we'll, we'll take care of the problem. This is our news data collection spreadsheet. Now, Bob and I are the only ones that have access to that. These are, I think, a snip of the letters I sent out. The white ones are the ones that I've sent out, and we haven't heard anything back. No, they haven't been arrested or turned themselves in. The blue ones are ones where they've been arrested. The blue ones, we've sent letters out, they've been arrested. The yellow ones are ones where we sent a letter out and it came back undeliverable. So we just, we just put that envelope with the warrant for future reference. As of July 20th, we sent out 29 letters. Fifteen offenders were arrested and six were returned as indeliverable. The advantage is, it gives the offender an opportunity to turn themselves in. Some of this could be low-hanging fruit, and they just forgot about this charge. So it gives them the chance to turn themselves in. They can save the tow bill, and then they're not confronted at their business or the residence by an officer knocking on the door. And the big thing is that if we get these people arrested, we get them into the system. A lot, a lot of the warrants we have are, you know, 15 years old, you know, that they're still in the process. So the sooner we can get them arrested and get them in, in the, in the system, then it's better for us, better for the prosecution. That's it. Any questions?
Any questions? It's like a great improvement. Eric?
Jeff, you know, I'd love to, love to see these type of processes, process efficiencies. I remember last year you brought us barcode scanning, and that really created with the evidence efficiencies and really like how we've streamlined the process right here with, with these warrants right here. So thank you guys, you know, Officer Samsky, on a, on a great path right here. Love to see the process efficiencies. I appreciate your work.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I do have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Do we anticipate that there'll be some increased officer safety for stops now that, that maybe they're not having to look at if there's an outstanding warrant, and, you know, as more of those people turn themselves in, there's less of those warrants to be served at just routine traffic stops?
So your question again was, will there be less on officer?
Yeah, will, will there be, do you anticipate a decrease in the number of, you know, arrest warrants being served through traffic stops because of this?
I, I think so. I, I'm probably not a whole lot, but, you know, a lot of the people that have warrants, they get stopped by Polk County or Des Moines, and, you know, then they, the warrant is validated, then they take them right to Polk County Jail. I think there'll be a decrease, but, you know, being in business, I'm just getting ready to start my 45th year in law enforcement. You always have to be very vigilant when you stop a car, because, you know, they could have a gun, and you don't know until you walk up there. So we always stress vigilance with officers to make sure that, that they're safe.
Of course.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Great job.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Yeah.
Next up, Jeff's going to give us a Clive Festival recap.
Good evening. Much lighter subject, hopefully. I'll just step away. I'm a little more advanced than the chief.
Space bar, is that it?
Not much, though. He wasn't here. Let me know when he's back in the room. Nothing was said while you were gone, Chief. Thank you. Please don't tell me. It was.
What that you know of.
And I'll tell you, you got your football game solved.
Appreciate that. Just skip to the end.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Here to tell you a little bit about how Clive Festival went, just feels like all three months ago, July 15th and 16th last month. So I think it's space bar, right? I just want to start with some thank yous for everybody that helped us. This certainly just isn't me standing up here taking credit. A lot of the people in this room, some of them even volunteered their time and had a good time down there. So to start the Parks Department, the Wednesday setup, I think it's always 95 degrees when they have to do that. So they're out there all day setting up all those canopies and, and whatnot, and all the power cords and lights. And then, of course, on Monday, they come back in and help us tear it all down. So thanks to them. The Clive Public Library, Stephanie and her group, all the activities Friday night and Saturday morning. Jeff's group, Jerry and Chris helped us out with some cones and barricades, and then the signs that you see on both 114th, just kind of caution, the festival's coming. Chief, these are the good parts. We were talking about the, the police. There was a lot of things that nowadays you have to think about in these events, and there's a lot of prevent response with the fire and a police boat. So thank you for all that, and the canine activity with Mark as well. And then, of course, being there both nights. So thank you for that, and Paul as well. The Firefighters Association, the Slip and Slide, Josh and his crew, that's a big event. Hundreds of kids go down that, so thank you to them. Admin Services is on there for all the clover, probably like, what is clover, but it's the point-of-sale devices that we, we have here. So that's actually, we've talked about it three times, I think, here now. The Chamber, of course, Christie and all her sponsor coordination. Tom Triggs' dad, the Clive Running Festival, they had over 400 runners this year. And then the Lions Club, of course, with all their work with the popcorn and the pancake breakfast. So it's definitely a Clive community event. Some highlights and successes, of course, if you remember, it was 95 degrees on Friday. It was a nice, cool 81 degrees on Saturday, so that definitely helped us. But the Saturday attendance was great. Friday, not so much with weather, and we might have missed on the bands as well. So if you were there on Friday, we, we, we kind of joke about it in our office a little bit, but the Running Festival was huge. Pancake breakfast was huge.
You missed on the bands, Jeff.
I don't, the, the Birdchild Band that we had on Friday night, the headliner, I don't know if that was the, the best choice for us, and they were expensive as well. So I think we can do better on that. So, yeah. Let's see, the LED screen usage, we went to a new vendor this year, Neurotech is the company. They were a much more professional reflection. If you were there for any of it, you saw a lot of sponsored videos, and, and of course, the Greenbelt Landing fundraising video was a huge hit. The festival grounds, we kind of refigured some things. We moved all the canopies back to give more access to just general people with lawn chairs and improve the flow overall. And then we also moved the vendors away from kind of the main area and moved our sponsors there, the folks that are giving us those important dollars to do the event, right? So those are, that was another success. Then the Clover point of sale system, again, these are what they look like. They're mobile, they run off mobile data, not wifi, so they're very reliable. We have two of these. And then we have a cash box, kind of a iPad, if you will. So very streamlined process and night and day from 2021 to 2022. Of course, we had a bunch of volunteers and staffing helping us. We limited the volunteers to no cash handling, so they weren't selling any tickets or anything like that. But a huge help beverage tent IDs and bounce houses. We had 36 volunteer shifts filled with 96 volunteer hours. And of course, our recreation staffing, our seasonal team, who's huge for us every summer, but they were huge for Clive Festival as well. So helped us with a multitude of things. You can see there 11 staff from our recreation team, 97 and a half hours for approximately $1,500 in wages. Something we followed up on, we sent a survey to all of our volunteers and staff. We had 18 responses. You kind of see the bullets there. It was just a lot of the credit card thing is a theme. It was a huge increase or a huge success. As well staff, nobody was stressed out. It was fairly enjoyable to work the weekend with us, I think. So maybe Liz and Roxanne and whoever else volunteered with us. And we need to improve the balance houses. It's a little bit of a, a mess over there. It's, it's a tight spot with space, right? So we need to just work on that or add some different type of games. And then on Saturday, the feedback was to add more youth and family activities throughout the day on the ground. So we'll work on that for next year as well. The finances, the revenue was roughly 37.6, expenses 43,000. So we operated a little bit of a loss of 5,500. According to Matt, I think that doesn't include $5,000 of city money. So we're, we're close. The revenue there, you can see the sponsorships, 22,000 in cash. We had some other in-kind donations that aren't listed there. Some help with the restrooms and some lighting as well. The merchandise sales were around $600. That's goat t-shirts and stickers and koozies and that such.
Goats just keep carrying you.
They do. I mean, it's.
Y'all are getting heavy.
We need to shrink that gap with more merchandise sales, right? Beverages were around $11,000 for note 2021, when the weather was fantastic, we were closer to 18,000. So that's a big difference. Bingo vendors, goat feed, that's, there you go, the goats were carrying us. I'm not counting in that revenue. I think it's important to note is what the Lions Club takes and then the slip and slide donations. So, and then you can see some expenses highlighted and in yellow are kind of the things we tweaked. The LED screen was a different company, but it was a way better reflection of us. We added another light tower, we added t-shirts for volunteers and staff. And then we had the monster mural, which was a kind of in the other activities. Then, of course, we had a drone and some photography going on that I think we'll send that to you on Friday, your Friday email. That is, is a great promotional tool for us in the, in the future. So.
I think they already got.
Have you gotten it before? Okay, we were gonna.
That was a wrap up video. This is actually a new video.
Yeah, yeah. And I think I was gonna end with that, but yeah, but we can send that tomorrow.
Yeah, just send me the link and I'll.
Sure. But it's about a two and a half minute video all through Friday and Saturday, ends with thanking our sponsors as of the fireworks are blowing off in the sky. So it's a pretty cool video. I think we'll be able to use that to gain more sponsorships for, for next year. So with that, I think that's the end of my, so we're gonna show that, but we'll send it tomorrow.
Quick question on the drone. Is that, is that something that we rent the drone and then operate? Or do they come in and just do the whole thing?
Yeah, no, it's a total, just a different vendor, soaring footage out of Polk City was the vendor for that.
Quality was so good that I'm going to be engaging them on our SQR video as well.
And they, there was a round $700 for that. And I think it's, when you see the video, I think you'll see it's, it was well worth it.
Great job. Big success. Eric?
Jeff, a couple of questions here. One on marketing, you know, in the past, one of the key indicators has been large banners that we have for the festival on University Hickman. Did we utilize those? There's any thought moving forward with those?
Yeah, we had eight banners. We actually had them in the right of ways. We were told to move them. So Doug's guys, these guys hate when I put up a banner, I'm telling you. So we had eight banners put up. It's kind of a joke, but it's not. We, we try to put them in the most visible spot. They're, they're four by eight banners and we had eight of them with the dates and everything. We have had those banners in the past, but we, we put the dates on them this year. On, around the Green Belt Trail at Campbell Park.
Just one of Lanan Park.
Lanan Country Club.
My next question is on the trailer and parks. That's where you have a lot of.
Yeah, definitely.
Coming, right?
Yeah, I think we, we had some at the Trail T at Campbell and the Trail T across the bridge.
That's cheap advertising.
Totally. I think our four by banners, like 80 bucks, 60 bucks, something like that. So.
What about our partnership with Bankers Trust? I know we talked a little bit about that. How do we, how do we utilize that? You know, that's an asset we have with that sign. Are we utilizing that?
Yeah, good question. We, I think we talked about it on Saturdays. We'll definitely use that next.
I brought that up, so.
Yeah, definitely.
I can say that we did use it this year. And I, I know that because up until earlier this week, they'd forgot to flip out our July message to our August message as well. So it continued to tell people about the Clive Festival many weeks after it happened. But I did confirm that that was up well advanced, the Clive Festival, to let people know what's going on.
Other question with, would we work with businesses so they could, a lot of, with volunteers, they would have, they'd be able to wear their shirts? Do anything of that nature?
Yeah, we certainly could. That was one of the improvements we thought was we'd give them a shirt this year and make it Clive Festival logo. But we, if we had groups that wanted to serve beverages, we could certainly do that.
A lot of the banks, Nick Mick, they get, you know, five, 10 people. It's a great way to get, get volunteers right there.
Yep.
And then last, with the deficit with, you know, over $5,000, what are we looking at to do to erase that? I know in the past years, we've had, you know, large, we haven't had those kind of deficits. So
Yeah.
What are we doing to erase that and move forward and make it profitable?
Yeah, great question. I think sponsorships is probably where to start, be more aggressive on those. I know Christie likes to work with a lot of her, just her members. So maybe we reach out to other members that are, that are not members. Community Choice is one that comes to mind. I do know we've had sponsors already reach out saying they want to be more involved. So do we take them from a $2,500 sponsorship to a five or 10? I think those are the things. We did have the, the suite on site, the VIP suite. So we kind of added that to say, hey, would you take, you know, your company outing to the event? And then that adds sponsorship dollars, I think. So.
Is that with the, with the rooftop?
Yeah.
Yeah. That was a great addition. I thought that was really.
Yeah, it was, we just talked to all our sponsors that were 2,500 and more that were onsite to say, hey, would you guys bring more people in and then have one for both days? So I think that's the theme is we tried a lot of different things. And Friday was kind of the, the catch all for, for our negative.
Any thoughts on the, the beverage being that low? You know, i- is it just because of the attendance numbers being down?
I think so, because on Saturday, we did over 8,000 and Friday was just like around four, 4,000. So I mean, you have a better crowd on Friday, you sell more drinks. I mean, there's some cost to it, but roughly we make about $4 a beer. So.
Overall, very successful event. You know, weather plays such a key role. Can't, can't control that. But I thought everything was really, was well ran and, and, you know, great build off for next year. So great job to you and your team, Phil.
Thank you.
Richard?
If I could just say one thing, I just want to thank Jeff and his team for all their work they did on this. As all of you know, the, the recreation team is completely different than it was a year ago. Although Jeff has been here. He has hired two new people that operate the pool as well as all our sports league and programming. So I want to thank him for all the work that he and his team did just to pull off all that with a very tight time crunch. So that's all I had.
Thank you, Richard. I do, I do appreciate Eric's comments on the deficit. I mean, you're looking at $6,000. Saying that, I'd like it to be made up next year. But for 6,000 for an event like that, for the city to throw an event like that dirt cheap, just for the exposure, even if you had to pay 6,000 every year.
Oh, and.
That event is well.
I thought you were done. Sorry. I, I would say.
You thought I was done before I even started.
That's true. It should have been done, actually. But, but actually, if you factor in the 5,000, that, that's coming from the general fund. It's almost a net that.
Pretty close to a wash. But Mike, I agree with you that, you know, for that kind of an event, for that, that showcase in the city, it's a small substation. But I think there's ways that we can, we can tighten that up.
All right. Thank you all. Again, a great event. Jeff, would you like to address the first item and only action?
Mayor Council, we're here tonight for the second reading ordinance, amending chapter three, entitled A to the City Code, which is the industrial and commercial waste hauler ordinance. As we talked about last time, we had a few items in there that we went through and discussed. What we've done since then is we've updated some of the documents in there, specifically added Articles 3A and 3B. And then updated the administrative penalties and cleaned them up and have a clean copy and a markup copy in there for you.
And Jeff, they, they want this by when? October 1?
October 1 is when.
We have plenty of time.
Yep, we'll have our third and hopefully final reading, first meeting in September and give us time to get it to them.
Jeff, you got any, have you had any, received any feedback from Lowe's or Witter Group, some of the key Clive businesses that are listed on this?
The only two is the Witter Group and it's Loves over there. Yeah. And neither of them, no, they're not impacted. The only impacts to them will be a slight increase in their annual permit fees.
How about any of the restaurants?
Restaurants have not, I don't know that they've all been notified, but for them, it is, they no longer have to pay $50 for inspection. It's included in their permit fee. So.
The one thing I would ask is, you know, I'm not sure how it affects exactly Witter Group other than the additional fees in the, in the Loves. But perhaps we should reach, I think WRA should have reached out, right, to the.
Might not hurt us.
Those are the ones, but let's reach out to those two that are pretty big businesses in our, in our town proactively before the next reading, right? So that if there is something, they can catch us before the third reading.
You know, the biggest change in the ordinance is the treatment fees, which is a biological waste in which they have neither. So it's just going to be the minor less than 1,500, $2,000, but probably should let them know and make sure they're aware of it.
Yeah, I think they'll appreciate the proactive. Yeah.
A great idea.
With that, I'd move that ordinance number 1125, having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption. Motion of the second, for the second reading, further discussion. Being none, would council please vote? And would clerk please post that vote? And at. So it's Weaver.
Yes, never.
Are we even gonna vote? Just sorry, Mayor.
I'm good. I got it.
Got it? For him. That passes by voted four to zero, the second reading. So that's the third of our next meeting. Now we're ready to move on to reports. Pete will start with you on your end.
Thank you, Your Honor. So our soil quality restoration program is in full swing. This is the first week of actual applications on day one. We got held back by the storm that happened the previous week, some of the hail damage and other things slowed up our team, but they got right on it on Tuesday. Were able to complete eight erations and six full installations. That's an incredible pace. We were not expecting to be that quick from the start. It's a good problem to have. It means that we'll be able to keep rolling through the entire neighborhood, all the neighborhoods at a good clip and have plenty of growing season thereafter to get the turf up through the compost and in good shape heading into the frost.
So what's the schedule if, based on this success, when will they finish?
Plan is to be finished in September. And then to be doing any kind of punch list work that needs to be done all the way into October. The contract's written that the project needs to be done in November. So we've got a good buffer there should anything arise. A total participants now is pushing up to about 90. We will still want to hit that 100 mark, but we've got a, a good opportunity. We've engaged our friends at the Legend Town Home Association. We'll meet with them on Tuesday to see if this is a good time for them to do all of their condos. But potentially also all of their common areas as well. And by my calculation, we have the bandwidth to handle that within our grant funds. But more to come in the weeks ahead on how we're going to sort of round out and fully maximize that grant. So we don't leave any money on the table.
Anything else, Pete?
No, Your Honor.
Free gun. Question for Pete real quick, Mayor. With that, can we do any city properties?
Yes, we can. Our priority with the grant, the way that we wrote the application was to work with residents.
Sure. I mean, I'm just saying, if we come up short last minute where we make sure we use the entire grant.
There's also some additional cost because we're doing testing on the soil and penitrometer testing too.
Yeah.
And so our preference, as we discussed this with staff, was to use other funds we already have to get that done. So really, all the grant dollars go to practices in the ground.
Good.
Thank you.
We got, just a couple of quick items. Been meeting with the West Des Moines School Board contacts to kind of try to find some more opportunities to collaborate there. Hopefully have something to report in the next, you know, next few, next meeting or next meeting after that. And then also working with Clive Historical Society. They're excited and prepping for the Latino Heritage Festival. They want to participate in that. And Matt and Pete have given some great suggestions that they're working on building out. And then I'm, I'm actually working on helping revise their mission statement. And we, we're also working on building some analytics on kind of the historical makeup of Clive. So hopefully we'll have something, hopefully by the time the heritage comes, Heritage Festival comes around, if not shortly thereafter.
Very good.
Anything else? Nope, that'll do it.
Ted.
Nothing but a nightmare.
Eric?
Yeah, a couple of things, as we said, sent out when we catch Des Moines, that we'll be hosting the Judy Olympics, which is a a huge economic boon, about $45 million. So we'll be hosting two of their events coming up here in the next several years. Also, a couple, we've got coming at the Mustang Club, the Soil and Water Conservation Society Annual Conference, Little League Summer Baseball Regionals, and of course, the Lorenzen, the Do True will be coming back as well. So really, some, some good things going on with bringing more events back in here to the local Des Moines Metro Market.
Good. Thanks, Eric.
I have nothing tonight.
Your Honor, following up on your inquiry from earlier this evening about the dog at large ordinance. I've canvassed four of our neighboring communities, Johnston, Urbandale, Lockheed and West Des Moines all have similar or identical ordinances to the city of Clive. That is all I have.
Thank you for the prompt research.
Asked her to do it tonight because she's on a flat one night feed. Later she stays, it's one feed.
Good strategy, good strategy. Very fiscally responsible.
Thank you, sir.
Matt? Your Honor, just a reminder, we'll have the, the Saturday strategic planning session in here and we'll have Lyle on the, the big screen on the Zoom. We'll have breakfast for you that morning, anticipating all of you. I know we know Susan's out of the country, but anticipate all of you being here in person for that. If that's changing, just let me know. Also, just a reminder to the agenda packet for the next council meeting, it'll go out a little bit earlier because of the Labor Day holiday. So you'll get that on Friday before that council meeting. And when I also say, Your Honor, I was, had the opportunity and I know a few mayor was there as well as Chief Benham and Paula to, to honor Lieutenant Colonel Stanger with her retirement from National Guard in the Army and enjoyed that on Sunday and appreciate, I know those of us in this room and around this dais are all in public service, but that level of public service for 25 years and was a pleasure to see that ceremony and that process and comments and plenty of tears and other things that happened that, that whole day. And, and just to hear the officers and the troops that she serves with, really honoring her that day was, was appreciated being a part of that, getting to watch that ceremony. So just wanted to mention that, Your Honor.
Don't forget the Nerf gun war either. That was.
I have at least four more decades to match the mayor in public service, so I'll keep working on it.
As a reminder, everybody, for strategic planning on Saturday, bring your iPads because we'll need those in addition to the cameras we have here in the room.
Yeah, because Lyle will want to see your face, use your camera. So.
Very good. Anything else for the goodie the order? Seeing none, we'll adjourn at 6:47. Thank you all.